Good evening, everybody. My name is Chris Hilsen. I'm the moderator for the Exeter School District. And welcome to the 2023 deliberative session for the Exeter School District. We're here to discuss, debate, and if appropriate amend certain warrant articles here in front of us tonight. There's only four. But before we do that, as we typically do, I'd ask that everybody rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, everybody. What I would ask at the front table, I'm going to ask everybody to go right down the line and introduce themselves so everybody knows who's in front.
Susan Benroth, the Public Security.
Esther Asbell, Associate Superintendent, SAU 16.
Susan Drinker.
Susan Drinker, Exeter School Board.
Dawn Bolins, Exeter School Board Chair.
Patty Soret, Exeter School Board.
Heather Eichmeyer, Exeter School Board.
Patrick O'Day, Exeter School Board.
Thanks, everybody. So again, as I said, we're here to discuss, ask questions about debate and amend, if necessary, certain warrant articles that are in front of us here tonight. Typically, we have rules. And because I'm an attorney, I have to have rules. So there are a set of rules at the back table if you want to peruse them. So far in my tenure as moderator, I've never had to use the rules. And ultimately, the legislative body, you folks can overrule me anyway. So I can make whatever rules I want, but you folks are in charge. You need to be a resident of Exeter to vote. And if you plan on voting, I'd ask that everybody check in in the back. If you are not a resident of Exeter, technically, you're not allowed to speak. However, typically what moderators do is they open it up to the floor to make sure everyone wants to hear from whomever the non-resident is. And then, again, in my tenure, I've never seen a legislative body say, no, we don't want to hear from person X. So with that backdrop, what I'm going to do is I'm going to read the first warrant article that's in front of us here tonight. And I'm going to turn it over to the particular board member who wants to present on it, and we can open up any discussion on it. So tonight, Article One is the operating budget. And I'm going to read it in its entirety and then open it up to a deserving member of the board to discuss. Article number one, operating budget. Shall this Exeter School District raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately, the amounts set forth on the budget posted with a warrant or as amended by vote of the first session for the purposes set forth therein totaling $23,374,631? Should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be $23,027,129, which is the same as last year, with certain adjustments required by previous action of the Exeter School District or by law. Or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 40:13, Roman numeral 10 and 16, to take up the issue of a revised operating budget only. The school board recommends $23,374,631. So at this point, I'd like to ask a board member to comment and present on Article number one. Who's the lucky party? Ms. Eichmeyer.
Great. So yeah, I think we talked a little bit about this at our last meeting. So the recommended amount represents an increase of 2.2% or $507,891. And I think I'll just point out again the big changes there that factor into the budget. There are changes in salaries for teachers, para salaries, and two additional permanent subs. The other sort of major increase was to health and dental insurance. So that increased by $285,238, which is a 15.6% potential increase in health costs that needed to be budgeted for. And there was also an increase of $218,000 in contracted services due to a change in student needs. We also saw reductions, so I'll just point those out again, that there was a decrease in special education transportation of $65,000, a decrease in special education tuition of $109,000, and a New Hampshire retirement decrease of $144,240. So the total change again represents a 2.2% change or $507,891. And I think, as we mentioned last board meeting, that that does not include teacher contract negotiations.
Thank you very much. Would anyone like to speak to this particular article, ask any questions? If you do, I'm going to ask you to come up here and share my microphone, given that we have a shortage of one here tonight. So you're going to have to crowd in with me. Would anybody like to be heard on this particular warrant article? All right. Hearing none. Article number one, the operating budget will go on the warrant as written. Excuse me. Are there any amendments to Article number one? I understand there's one typo here that we may want to take up as a group. Mr. O'Day.
So I want to make a friendly amendment. There's a typo towards the end of the article that has an extra dollar sign in it.
Okay.
And so I'd make a friendly amendment to have that extra dollar sign removed.
So the amendment before this legislative body is to strike that additional dollar sign at the tail end of Article number one. Would anybody like to be heard on that particular motion to amend? All right. Hearing none. I'm going to go by a voice vote at this point. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The ayes have it. Would anybody else like to be heard on Article One as amended? All right. Hearing none. Article One as amended shall go on the warrant for consideration on March 14, 2023. Do I hear a motion to limit reconsideration or rediscussion on Article number one?
I'll make a motion.
So moved. Do I hear a second on that?
I'll second.
Second. All right. Point of order. A motion to limit reconsideration of a particular article is to avoid what I feel is an unfair scenario. At the end of the night, everybody leaves and maybe a new contingent comes in and undoes all the work that the legislative body has done at the beginning. I've always felt that's an unfair result, and oftentimes moderators will ask to limit reconsideration of a particular warrant article so that unjust scenario doesn't occur. So right now, we have a motion to limit reconsideration on Article number one and a second. I'd ask again by a voice vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none. Reconsideration is limited on Article number one. So we're going to move forward to Article number two, and I'm going to read it again in its entirety. Article number two, collective bargaining agreement. To see if the school district will vote to approve the cost items, including in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the Exeter School District and the Exeter Education Association, which calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits at the current staffing level over the amount paid in the prior fiscal year. Fiscal year 2024, an estimated increase of $401,587. And fiscal year 2025, an estimated increase of $387,665. And in fiscal year 2026, an estimated increase of $417,633. And further, to raise and appropriate $401,587 for the current fiscal year, such sum representing the additional costs attributable to the increase in salaries and benefits required by the new agreement over those that would have been paid at current staffing levels. The school board recommends that the school district approve these cost items and make the appropriation of $401,587. Would anybody -- well, let me turn it over to the board. Who is going to present on Article number two? Mr. O'Day.
Okay, thank you. So in terms of the negotiations with the teachers' group, it was a great discussion that we had over a period of time to really try to understand what things were challenges, what things would be beneficial. And as a result of those discussions, we came up with a couple of things. You see on the warrant article, the pieces that have a cost impact. And the primary driver of the cost impact is something that's natural, which is a wage increase. It works out to, I have here, I think it's 3% the first year, 2% the second year, and 2.25% in the third year. There are a couple other small things that have some cost implications. For example, we added some time at the beginning of the year for new staff members to go through some specialized training and pay them to come in early, which is really helpful for the transition for everyone. And then there's a lot of things that are in the contract that you don't see that don't have a cost implication, but really make it a better environment for the teachers, make it a better environment for the students. So without really going through those things, they include things like, for example, some additional time for bereavement if there happened to be a loss in the family, and really sort of expanding what that definition is. And then just some more flexibility in some other areas that seem to better meet what the teacher needs were and the student needs were. So that's the agreement, and it's something that we feel really confident in, that it's a good agreement and helps make this a great place to work and a great place for students.
Thank you, Mr. O'Day. Would anybody like to be heard on Article number two? Hearing none. Article Two as written will appear on the annual ballot. Moving on to Article number three, described just generally as other. It reads, shall the Exeter School District, if Article Two is defeated, authorize the governing body to call one special meeting at its option to address Article cost items only? This is a safety measure in case Article Two does not pass, obviously. Would anybody like to present on this? It's procedural in nature, but is anyone?
I think the article speaks for itself. Thank you.
I think so, too. Would anyone like to comment on Article number two, debated, or offer any sort of amendments on, I'm sorry, Article number three? All right. Hearing none. Article Three will go on the ballot as written. Incidentally, I broke my own rule. Do I hear a motion to limit reconsideration of Article Number Two and Article Number Three?
Motion.
So moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Would anyone like to discuss limiting reconsideration on Articles Two and Three for this legislative body here tonight? All right. Hearing none. I'm going to have a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, great. We're going to move on to Article number four. Right now, the Special Education Expendable Trust. And again, I will read it in its entirety. Shall the school district "will" vote, as it currently reads, to raise and appropriate the sum of up to $75,000 to be placed in the Special Education Expendable Trust Fund previously established for the unanticipated special education costs at the Exeter Elementary School. This sum to come from June 30 fund balance, from the June 30 fund balance, available for transfer on July 1. No additional amount to be raised from taxation. The Exeter School Board recommends this appropriation. Is there somebody from the board who would like to present on Article number four?
I would. Thank you. This money is put aside in case we have an out-of-district placement or something that is a huge and unexpected special education expense. The money comes from surplus of funds. No additional cost to Exeter taxpayers for this.
Thank you very much. There is a typo in Article number four. Do I hear an amendment to just fix that for the warrant article? Mr. O'Day.
So I'll make another friendly amendment, which is that remove the word "will." So I think it would read, shall the Exeter School District vote, instead of shall the Exeter School District will vote. So remove the word "will" from that.
Thank you very much. So we have a motion to strike the word "will" from the current version of Article number four. Would anybody like to be heard on that minor typographical amendment? All right. Hearing none. Well, do I have a second to move that? Okay, we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? All right. The ayes have it. Would anybody like to be heard on Article Four, the substance of it as amended? All right. Hearing none. Article Four as amended will appear on the warrant article. Do I hear a motion to limit reconsideration of Article number four? I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Anyone want to discuss limiting reconsideration on Article number four? Hearing none. I'm going to have a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, that, ladies and gentlemen, concludes our business here at the 2023 Exeter School District deliberative session. Thank you very much. Thanks to everybody. I'm not sure we set a record, but we're close to getting through with that as quickly as possible. So with that, I'm going to close the 2023 Exeter School District deliberative session. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to call the Exeter School Board meeting to order at 29 p.m. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here. We just finished the deliberative session, and during that time, we did the Pledge of Allegiance. So I think we don't have anyone else who showed up in between there, so we're going to move on with that. That was the first thing on the agenda. The second thing is official year 24 budget, which we already discussed in the deliberative session as well. I think I would like to just take the time to remind people that the warrant articles that we talked about are going to be on March 14 at Talbot Gymnasium for voting. I hope people will show up and cast your vote. Know that we worked very hard on the articles that we presented, and, you know, we look forward to everyone turning up on March 14. Okay, so three public input. Did you start the clock? Did you already do that?
I am. Nope, right now I did.
Thank you. So we're going to start the clock for 30 minutes of public input, and we will leave that running throughout our meeting in case anyone comes in late to would like to speak to the board. We will have time for them to do so. That brings us to the PTO update. I don't think anyone was here, and I heard that they're having a meeting tonight. So hopefully, we'll have an update from them at the next meeting. I know they were at the last meeting. I unfortunately was not here to meet the new presidents, but I would look forward to exciting PTO news to help support our wonderful schools here. We're already at number five. Let's see, the SAU 16 update. Esther Asbell.
Sure. Thank you. Just a quick update. Obviously, we've been doing budgets with deliberative sessions, preparing for those, started on Saturday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday are various deliberative sessions throughout SAU 16. And then, of course, Brentwood and Stratum will have their district town, their school district town meetings in March. So we're well on our way. And again, I want to reiterate, I hope that everybody gets out and votes. Along with that, we do have facilities update. I met with Dawn and Rusty on a couple of things coming up. One of them is the fire panel at Main Street School is, I mean, Lincoln Street School. It's on not doing well. It's 35 years old, and it's functioning. However, we would like to recommend, Rusty would like to recommend, that we look at replacing that as he feels it needs it after 35 years. I have the email here. I can't seem to locate it in my pile of papers, but I will find it. As I recall, it was $39,000 to replace that. And then the other issue that we are looking at with facilities is the board had put aside $100,000 for looking at the HVAC systems at Lincoln Street and Main Street. One school is completed. The other school needs it. I believe that's Main Street, needs theirs done. But it's going to be an additional $13,000 to complete that. So I would ask the board to consider adding the $13,000 to the money that's left to complete so both schools are done as you had wanted when we put the money aside, the $100,000 last spring. Molly can speak to the financials, so you have an idea of what our bottom line looks like right now. For this time of year, we are in great shape. That's why I bring this forward to the board now, those two rather large expenses. I don't believe we need to go to the maintenance trust. In talking with Molly, we feel that there's more than ample funds due to unfilled positions, et cetera, throughout this year, that the budget could support both of those items to get done, the fire panel and the extra $13,000 to complete the HVAC study. And if you have any financial questions, Molly, I'm sure can answer those.
I think I'll just add that as we spoke, you know, the fire panel in and of itself, I said unless, you know, the board strongly objects to that, I think it's something important and it's something that's in the maintenance that we can pay for out of the maintenance line item already with the balances that are there currently. I don't know if you know that off the top of your head, Molly, if you came prepared.
So the trust fund balances are in the last board report. We didn't have a board report this month since it's the deliberative, but it was on the last board report, if you have a copy of that. And also, the financials are in line with what we reported last month in January, about 1.5 million. The only real change is we did get additional special education aid to the tune of $80,000. So that was really good news. But that's unanticipated revenue.
Okay. Okay.
But Dawn, you were talking about the line item, not the trust fund.
Yeah, I'm talking about the line item.
You're talking about out of the operating budget, that there's money in the maintenance line item.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't have the budget in front of me, but.
It's on the backside of that.
This was in your, it came, I think, yesterday in your packet. But what the financial does point out is exactly what Molly said. Our projected remaining balance right now is that 1,634, but that's with the revenue so that we can't spend the $64,000 that's unanticipated revenue from the special ed that she just indicated. So we're about 1,570 unbalanced, so 1.5 million.
Sorry, 64,000, like I said.
So again, that's why.
1,570,000.
Yes.
Right.
So that's why I would support the board entertaining a motion to approve both of the expenditures from the maintenance line in the current operating budget.
Yeah. So I would make that motion.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
So in terms of just, I'm sorry.
No, no.
In terms of discussion, just, I mean, I completely agree with your point. I mean, it's a safety issue, and, you know, sure, nothing's happened, but we're getting a recommendation to replace it. This isn't something we want to wait until after the summer and try to take it on. As soon as, immediately, as soon as we know that's an issue, we should get on trying to replace it, not wait for it to fail before we do anything. And I think for the HVAC study, that's something that we've been trying to work on for a long time, and sooner we can get a jump on it, the sooner we can get our head around how we want to move forward with any additional steps. So I think that's also important to prioritize that. So I think both of those are great projects to do now.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion to include the HVAC as well?
I thought that's what I was moving, but I can clarify what I was trying to move, and we can do it again. But I was trying to move that we apportion, what, up to $60,000 for the fire panel and up to $15,000 for the additional study. Sounds like that will cover both of those.
Yeah.
Yep, I did just go back to the email, and he has estimate his first one, and he has gotten to, for the panel, would be 39. So certainly 50 would cover that.
Okay.
And they're requesting the additional $13,000 to finish the study.
Okay.
Combined with what was already approved.
So when we say up to 50, I mean, of course, if it's 30, it's 30, but just in case. Correct. So they don't have to come back before the board. And then up to 15,000 in case, for whatever reason, it's slightly over what the estimate is.
And who was second to that? Was somebody, you good within a second on this one? So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And the last thing is I would make a request, Chair, Madam Chair, at the end to go into non-public. I do have one personnel issue.
Okay. Yep. Sounds great. All right. So that brings us to the public meeting minutes. I was not at the last meeting, so I reviewed them, but I'm looking for, Patty, maybe you or someone else can make a motion to approve the minutes if there's any corrections or whatnot as well. Or if anybody's, you ready, Heather? If you're ready? Anyone who's ready?
I would like to move to approve the, I guess, should I just do the public first and then the non-public? I'll approve the public and non-public minutes from our last meeting on January 10.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion in the minutes? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'm going to stay. Thank you. All right, great. So that brings us to the Main Street principal reports.
Try not to be too long-winded, but feel like it's been a while since we've been here. We do have a couple updates. So the end of January brought the start of Chinese New Year, and so we are making a more conscientious effort to make sure that we are acknowledging things as they come up in the calendar instead of trying to fit, like, holidays around the world in December.
Yeah.
So that's something that our teachers were incorporating. And if you didn't know, that the Year of the Rabbit was a symbol for longevity, peace, and prosperity in Chinese culture. So it's a year of hope, which we feel like we all could use. So that's a good thing. And then this month, we obviously, we started Black History Month. And so the video that I attached with the minutes was a performance by some students from PEA, and they came out in honor of Martin Luther King Junior Day a little early. And the group is called Outcast. So two of the performers from Outcast came to our second graders, and they are an all-male stepping and hip-hop dance group that promotes strength through movement. And so they came and they explained the history of step, and they did some performing, and then they had the kids get up and learn some moves and do like little competition stuff. It was super cool. So we love that we were able to do that with PEA. On January 12, our staff used the early release time to write their personalized narratives for the progress reports, which is a lengthy and tedious process, but is really important to help paint the pictures of each one of our learners. And so we tried to be more conscientious in hearing some of the feedback from the board, too, about making sure that we notified families that the difference kind of between the progress report that comes out, which takes account multiple data points, and the iReady report, which is a data point. So if there was some confusion on that, and that the iReady informs the progress report. So hopefully, that came across better. Did you feel like it was better?
It was great.
Good. I'm glad.
My perspective, yeah. It was very, the cover letter, the email that you sent was really clear and.
Good. We didn't get questions, so.
Yeah, I was curious if you heard any feedback.
No, we didn't. So we'll have to wait and see. Yeah. I think the progress reports are still like a work in progress, where actually, we have a meeting, like, all SAU-wide on Friday to continue to talk about progress reports and making sure that they are giving the information that we want them to give. And so I think that's just going to be like a work in progress. But we're doing our best to try to make sure that we communicate that so families are feeling, I mean, that they have the most up-to-date information for what we have right now. We're working on completing several of our mid-year academic diagnostics. Also, those pieces of information helped inform the progress reports, but they're also being used. We're going to show you some of our iReady growth from the beginning of the year to our mid-year data and how we're using that information for intervention groups and extension groups. And so we're getting ready to start our next rotation with that. We have been partnering with our DARE officer, Officer Petrowski, who's just a lovely man. And he comes, and he's been working with our second graders on safety. And so there's lots of, like, you know, wearing your helmet and about chemicals in the house. And so he's been doing lessons, probably every two or three weeks, he's got like a couple different rotations. And then he's been coming in at lunchtime to see the kids, and he's got like a nice little thing going with the second graders, which is nice because then he'll see them again over here. We've been continuing our Haven visits, and so that is a program that teaches children about safe touches. We were able to sit in on some of their presentations. They do a really nice job talking about this critical issue, so we're grateful for that connection that we have with them. We have after-school enrichment that's going strong. We did add a new activity this time with the help of one of our newly hired permanent subs, which is exciting. Her name is Rebecca Holwick, and she's been teaching yoga. And the kids are super pumped about yoga, and she has a great lesson. So that's been a fun addition. And then we also hired Mrs. Amy Jean Muscop, and she is also going to be a permanent sub. She just started, and her family is new to the area. She has twins in second grade, but they're here from Long Island, and she has a teaching degree, so she's going through her reciprocity. But she is subbing for us in the interim while she tries to find a position. So those have been two great additions. And we are searching for two long-term subs. They're posted now because we have two maternity leaves coming up. One is for Mrs. Katie McNamara in PE, and then one is for Mrs. Kelly Fisher in first grade. So if anybody's listening and they want some long-term sub experience, let us know. if anybody's listening and they want some long-term sub experience, let us know. But, you know, congratulations to them and their families. Fortunately, we haven't had to move into our remote snow day plans, but we do have them ready to go. And this is just a reminder for anyone listening that because of the two traditional snow days we had, that moves our academic school year, it's been adjusted and so students now would release on June 15th. So that's just a note to make. We are helping, if any families are listening that are looking for assistance for summer camp, we've built up some really nice partnerships with some community helpers and organizations to help fund some of those summer programming tuition and just to fill out the registration stuff. It can be a little overwhelming. And so we do have a group at Main Street that's willing to help families if anybody is looking for that. We got a book group going on at school right now. It's Dare to Lead and Mrs. Carla Putney is hosting those twice a week and there's some really good conversations coming from that. Also in training, we have next week Acadians Training, which is a universal assessment that replaces Dibbles, if you're familiar with Dibbles, but it does some discrete skills. And so our teachers are going to be learning about Acadians reading this semester. And the next semester, they're going to be doing the same for math, which is great because we've been looking for another data point for math. We do have quite a few for reading, but we're excited to be able to add another data point for math so that we have some more solid information when we make our groups. And our teachers are continuing with math-empowered trainings and some science of reading trainings. Today, if you didn't know, marked the 100th day of school. So, I know, we're like moving along. So 100th day of school, we had lots of ways that it was celebrated. Kids were wearing their 100th day crowns at our school and bringing in 100 items and kids did counting activities and shirts with 100 things on them. And so that's always kind of fun. And then a couple of things that are also DIJ-related. I do, I'll give you guys these invites. We have our first community conversation happening this Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00. If you're able to make it, we would love for you to be there. It does say that you need to register, but you don't. Anybody can show up. It was just so that we could try to get rough numbers, but, you know, we want everybody to come that's able, even if they were not able to register. And so it's really kind of unpacking the lingo. And we've talked about it at this board, that there is a lot of lingo in education. And so we want people to come and be like, what are these terms and how does that look like with our age group children? And so we're hoping that we have a really good turnout there. We also have been partnering with an organization, Constellations, they have a BCBA. And so thank you to our special education administrators who have helped make this connection. The BCBA has been coming and she's been going into some classrooms that have like a lot of behavioral needs and talking about what best practices might be for Tier One to help ensure that all kids can access the curriculum. And so she's got some interesting ideas and things that we're trying to put into place. So we're also really grateful for that relationship. And then the only other thing that I was going to add is that I did attend wellness, since that's not something that we are overseeing anymore. I did attend the SAU's Wellness Committee recently that Jean Pierce is running. There were some stakeholders all from around the SAU and we talked about how we could combine some of our efforts. We're solidifying like the final plan of what the work of that committee is going to be, but one of the suggestions that seemed to land that we're going to grow out is helping families get more information about health and nutrition and screen time and those sorts of things. And we would be creating some regular little blurbs to go out in all of our schools' family newsletters so that people are getting like a consistent message just about, you know, some recipes to try or staying active or, you know, those types of things. So that's where you are with wellness. That's it. Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Uh huh.
First of all, it's awesome to hear all of the incredible community partnerships that are developing all the time, it seems. I had one question. You said if people want to access the help for summer programs, who do they?
I mean, they could just call the front office. It's really Carrie Costello and our nurse, Caitlin Anglia, they're both like leading that work and they have met with quite a few families already. They're just super well-connected. I'm amazed sometimes at like where they can pull things from. They do a great job. I mean, we, they just recently made a connection with an organization that makes beds for families that are coming out of like a home instability situation. So we've been able to provide some beds and bedding and so I don't, they're just, they're really well-connected. And then our PTO, we ended up having like a pretty good number of students that we felt like we kind of prioritized for safety, that maybe would need some summer plans. And so we reached out to our PTO, who also said if there was any sponsorships that they needed to kick in, that they would be more than willing to do that. So thank you to our PTO for that, too. But yeah, I mean, there's like a good number.
That's incredible. And I'm curious, just as, you know, for people who might be listening, who might have access to other relationships, is there, you know, I guess I'm curious if there's people in the community who have services they can contribute or ideas for partnership, if, what that communication line might be to the school.
Again, to the front office or to me or to either of those other two ladies that I mentioned. It's something that also came up in the Wellness Committee of really like, can we create kind of an SAU 16 community resources? Because I do think that we have certain individuals who are just more in tune or have, because of other experiences or whatever, have different connections, that really we should be creating something, especially for some of our smaller schools who may, maybe don't have people in those roles. Like, how do we kind of share that information to help all of our families? So there is some work being done and we would love to add to that list if anybody wants to help with that.
The camps that you're talking about are not run by us.
No. So there's, I'm trying to think of some of the main ones. We do have.
Great Bay?
So we have Great Bay, Camp Lincoln. We recently did like a whole meeting with the Y and talking about all of our community efforts. And so we made some connections with the director from Camp Lincoln. Then they have Little River, which is at the Y. There's the Exeter Summer Program. There's the, I think there's one in Brentwood Summer Program. There's a few who we reached out to and said that they would be willing to reserve certain slots and weeks for us. And so we've been getting together to figure out who would fill those slots. And so it's been a really nice partnership so we can help our families out.
Is Great Bay still running their camp here or?
They are. So we have, that's kind of like a summer, yeah, that's kind of like our summer school connection with them. But there are some people who outside of our, Great Bay did give us some slots outside of our summer school program to say if we needed to extend, that they would be willing to put some spots for our kids, too. So.
Okay, thanks.
Could I just add that we do, if you go on the SAU 16 webpage, there's under Resources, there's a huge community resource webpage. So Wellness might want to look there and see what they could add to it. So that's already there and up and set, just, you can just modify it.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that it?
All right, thanks.
Great, thank you. Okay. And that brings us to Lincoln Street. Brings us to Lincoln Street. Principal Muskie.
Good evening, everybody. There are a couple of items as I go through that I will just say pertains to both Main Street as well as Lincoln Street. Tanya did a very thorough job of covering them.
Reverse the order once in a while.
Yes, exactly.
The first thing I'd like to say is that tomorrow, students in grades three and four at Lincoln Street School will participate in a performance by Tiger through Plymouth State University, which we've had in years past. Tiger, this is kind of a, this is a lengthy acronym, so hang on here. Tiger stands for Working Together for the T, Inspiring Others to Greatness for the I, Giving to Others for the G, Showing Empathy and Compassion to the E, this is a loose acronym, and Respecting Themselves and Others for the R, with a special focus on important and social emotional skills and empowering young people to make good choices. Tiger promises to engage school audiences in important ways and encouraging children to develop strategies for what to do in different interpersonal interactions as well as to embrace the importance of working together. And when we think about especially, you know, our age range as well as Main Street, too, in just the last few years, these are skills that we really continue, you know, every day, every week to really try to reinforce with students. So when we can bring in an outside group like this, it really, you know, it's just another connection that students can make to kind of transfer those skills to different environments. So we're excited about that. We have an upcoming peacemaker training, you know, when we think about the work that we're doing with restorative justice, especially with our, you know, older students in fourth and fifth grades. We'll have 36 fourth and fifth grade peacemakers to participate in a day-long training to work on their skills in holding circles. These circles will include topics such as friendship, including others, and what it means to be your best self. They'll be practicing these circles in third-grade classrooms at Lincoln Street School and also in classrooms at Main Street School to help introduce those students to circles as well. So we're excited to have that training. Students that will participate in that training will have a permission slip sent home so that parents are aware that they'll miss some classes on that day in order to participate. On January 11th, very similar to Main Street, we had some very talented and dedicated students from PEA, Phillips Dexter Academy, worked with our third, third-grade students during their Unified Arts period. And so we had different focuses, you know, if it was an art classroom, it was an art activity. If it was in library, it was reading some short stories that had to do with diversity. If it was in PE class, it happened to be a female step group that gave a performance, spoke about the history of step and then encouraged kids to participate in like some mini lessons. And in music, students shared some excerpts from jazz and talked about the history of jazz in the United States. So they stayed for both UA blocks, which means all 10 third-grade classrooms got the same experience as far as, you know, whichever special they had on that day, but had a very similar experience. So we're very grateful that we were able to arrange that with PEA and that we're in a space right now in 2022, 2023 where we can start re-establishing those relationships. Tanya spoke about the Semester One Alma Progress Reports and iReady Family Reports that were sent out on January 27th. Our staff did a really great job. And also shout out Deanna, spent a lot of time working with staff as well as myself and just helping to revise and make sure that those narratives were personalized and spoke to where the students were right now as a learner and those next steps. And again, hopefully that letter was helpful in bridging those two data points between the progress report as well as the iReady report. Based on iReady, the iReady data as well as some other data points, Main Street and Lincoln Street have started planning for ESSA and ESY, which will run from June 27th through August 10th, not the week of July 4th, but the other week. So they'll run the same time. I think last summer, they weren't exactly, they were a little off. So this hopefully will be easier for families because if they have students in both programs, it will run for the same time period. And if students are going to be invited to the Exeter Summer School Academy, ESSA, Summer Skills Academy, letters or emails will be sent out prior to February break. So we're working towards that fairly quickly. Northeast Passage has been attending recess for grades three and four monthly. Their aim of their work is to teach cooperative play skills, very similar to what we're talking about with like Tiger and a lot of these interpersonal social skills, to teach cooperative play skills to students through recess games. They've done a variety of tag games. The purpose behind these services is to promote cooperation, inclusion, and hopefully fun. Students who struggle to follow rules or find others to play with have easy access to an adult who will guide their play and promote healthy playground connections, which when we think about those unstructured times of the day, recess is like number one on top. So this has been a really great piece that Diana DiNito and Northeast Passage have been able to kind of partner together and bring them to our students. For our professional development, staff continue with math-empowered training as well as science of reading trainings with our consultants Carolyn Werster and Marion Nice. And additionally, we just had our last two days with Deb Bamforth, who's been with us, I think as early as maybe last spring, but for a couple, two-day chunks throughout the fall and winter. And our staff asked for two additional days and we were able to make that happen. So her work has primarily been working with collaborative teams and the teaming model as well as helping with our curricular work and scope and sequence. And what she worked on yesterday and today was really looking at this second half of the year. We've got this new set of data points. How are we going to use that? How does that transfer into the classroom to, you know, guide instruction, guides student groupings and, you know, inform what we're doing. In the classroom, students in grade five just finished their second session of PAL, which culminated with an afternoon of bowling donated by Exeter Bowling Lanes. That was incredible. And in March, I believe, our fifth-grade students will begin the DARE program with Officer Petroski. And as Tanya mentioned, he's doing a really great job of building relationships throughout our entire building, but also now moving into Main Street, which, you know, he's only one person, but he's doing a great job. And just connected also with Exeter Police Department, their service dog, Maple, has been up and greeting students at the start of our day. It's been in the newsletter a few times, but we've also invited Maple and her trainer, Bailey Officer, Bailey Texera, to join students during their morning meeting, start of day, so they can learn a little bit more about that relationship that we have with Exeter PD and, you know, what type of training Maple has done to be a service dog or a comfort dog, particularly for youth in the seacoast area. So that's been something that the kids have really enjoyed. I'm almost, we didn't have an update last week or last month. That's, this feels a little long-winded. We just finished our third cycle of Math Win and I mention that because we're going to talk a little bit about our winter data points. And we've spoken about that Math Win model as being something that a lot of resources and time and planning has been put into. So that third cycle focused on geometry. The fourth session, which will start next week, is going to focus a little bit more on fractions, two areas that at this age group are really, you know, as we work kind of between the concrete and the abstract a little bit, these are tough skills and certainly something that we try to, if we can get additional time spent on it, it's beneficial for the students. We are halfway through our second session of after-school enrichment. We have a whole bunch of offerings that filled up right almost at the start, which is great. You know, we want to try to get as many offerings so we can get as many kids in as possible, but these all filled up within a couple of days. Take-up Our Club, Top Secret Adventure, Art Journaling, Sports Medley, Needle Felting, Diamond Art, and Board Game Bonanza. And wow, I think that was it. I think that was it.
Wonderful.
Great.
Very busy. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I have a question for the principals. Oh, go ahead, Susan.
I just wanted to say, I love the updates that we get with the photos and it's great. So it's great to see what's going on so much.
Absolutely. We'll try to get some of tomorrow's performance as well.
I have a very important question. Want to let you know the book, Officer Buckle and Gloria? Do you know that book?
Yeah.
It's a very, it's worth looking at. Just hearing you, yeah. It's a great book. It's a Calvico Award winner and it's a very cute book about the relationship between an officer and his dog in the school giving safety tips. So encourage you to look at it.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Beth has a couple comments.
We could have story time at a board meeting, perhaps.
No, right now. Okay.
Do you have some data?
Yeah.
Which will be fairly quickly.
So I'm going to come around. I don't know if anybody wants to come around.
Oh, public input.
They have, they're going to show us the data.
Thank you, Esther.
Oh, you're fine.
Let me take this. Sorry to be getting so late.
Oh, yeah, thanks. You can do it.
Okay.
All right, I'm going. Are you going to go?
Um, I'm going.
Okay.
Speedy, speedy.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, me. I'm scared. I'm going.
You know, when I went to revise a few things of SAA 2022.
Oh.
I'm going to use your snap.
It would have been on the inter snap.
Do you want me to do this while you do your quick?
Oh, sure. I don't, I'm just scared.
I was just going to talk briefly.
Yeah.
So you go through the biggest one. I think it's good to just review that.
I said, make it snappy. It's going to be ready.
You're right.
Let me go half lights.
Oh, really?
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Oh, I hit the plate.
Well, because you're right.
I just want to be close to you.
You are so close.
Speedy, people.
Not dismissive.
I love her. I love her.
I do, too. I'm sorry.
But I'm like nerdy with the.
I'm ready to win. Okay. All right. So yes, I just don't want to rush you. So a lot of this, we're going to go through it fairly quickly because I feel like at the beginning of the year, we did kind of go through each of the colors and the tiers and all that kind of stuff, but ask questions if you have questions. But again, all that we want to reiterate is that the data that you're about to look at is focusing on end-of-year skills, right? So it's just something that you need to take into consideration as you're looking at those. And to reiterate that, like, this is a data point that we use. We have lots of data. This data, as you go through it, you'll see that there is lots of good growth that we're excited about, but we are very aware that there still is a lot of areas of focus and a lot of work that needs to be done as we continue the second half of the year. And both of our schools have been working with our staffs and are going to continue to work with our staffs to really look at this data to make some good decisions about how we can best use our time for the remainder of the year. So it does look good, but we also know there's still a lot to do. So you'll see, this is for whole school reading, so it's just second, first and second grade. We don't do kindergarten reading for obvious reasons at this time. So you'll see fall on top and winter on the bottom. And so really, like, the goal is to close that, the yellow and red, right, and to move them into the green. And so we do have a lot of growth there, which is exciting. And we have been working with our librarian and with our STEAM teacher that you met at the last meeting to talk about how we could offer some extensions for math and for reading and to kind of cycle through to make sure that different kids are getting experiences. And we're continuing conversations with our teachers to talk about how they can also do some extensions in their classroom. It doesn't always mean that you need to send somebody out, but there's ways that you can grow in your room when they're working in other targeted intervention groups. But, so this is the whole school. Let me go to the next one, Ryan. And this is just first grade. So you see a lot of good growth going on in first grade. at the last meeting to talk about how we could offer some extensions for math and for reading and to kind of cycle through to make sure that different kids are getting experiences. And we're continuing conversations with our teachers to talk about how they can also do some extensions in their classroom. It doesn't always mean that you need to send somebody out, but there's ways that you can grow in your room when they're working in other targeted intervention groups. But, so this is the whole school. Let me go to the next one, Ryan. And this is just first grade. So you see a lot of good growth going on in first grade. It's all good. Second grade. I think the thing that I was excited about in second grade is to really see the, that growth in the students who are at or above grade level. And so that also tells us, like, there's some work that we need to do since we have a lot of students who are finding success just halfway through the school year. Here's whole school math. This does show kindergarten. Sometimes the kindergarten data can be a little wonky. It depends, it's on the computer. So sometimes we get flagged, they get click happy, there's the focus. So, you know, we kind of take that with a grain of salt, yeah, with kindergarten. But you'll see that there's been lots of good growth in math from fall to winter. There's kindergarten by itself, a lot of really good skills in kindergarten. And our focus there is really just number cents, you know, just their counting and numbers and objects. And so there's lots of time spent on that and they're making really good progress. Here's first grade. So a decrease in that yellow and an increase in the green. Some of our students that you'll see in red, some of those students may get special education services and are working on additional goals. Those students will get grade level, most of them will receive grade level content, intervention, and time with a special education teacher. So they're getting multiple kind of doses of their instruction. And then here is second grade. So you can see again, not a lot of really nice gains, but still a lot of work to do.
So I have a question because I know we focus a lot, and rightfully so, on those kids that are falling into the tier two and tier three. But the kids that come in with those skills and there's sort of the dark green group that's on there, what sort of things do we do to challenge them and sort of keep them engaged?
Yeah. So that's, it's, just to be frank with you, it's still an ongoing conversation. We do have some students, like I was mentioning, that go and see Jackie Carlosi, our STEAM teacher. And she is doing some super cool things that are math-related specifically. It's not just like fun STEAM stuff, it's like extension for math. And she has classroom experience, so she's got like a lot of really brilliant ideas on how to do that and make them engaging. And some of them are on tech and they're making these math storyboards and they're doing some really cool things. And then with iReady itself, what is nice about iReady is that they're supposed to have 45 minutes a week, but they're on their own pathway. So if students are working in their pathway, they can still be getting content that is accelerated or above grade level. It doesn't lock them in at second grade. They're able to continue going through it. So it's not like they're just sitting and wasting their 45 minutes. It keeps adapting because it's an intuitive program. So they're getting it that way. The conversation that we're having is outside of, you know, Jackie's STEAM and what the program is doing, what opportunities can take place in the classroom if those kids are staying with you, that they might be able to extend their learning. And so it is tricky because we're asking teachers to differentiate. They're trying to do run intervention, sometimes more than a grade level than they're doing at grade level, and then they need to do some extension. But there's a lot of really good training on, like, it doesn't actually take that much to extend, it's just how you think about things. It's not extra work, it's not more assignments, it's not like that. It's about extending the thinking. And so that's going to be a focus. I know Lincoln Street, they're doing the same. They've been working with their teams. We're getting ready to this semester. We meet with our teacher teams once a week. And so right now, they've been working on a social studies and E L A units to where they could do a cross-curricular thing, but those are about to wrap. And then we're going to be getting into differentiation for their small groups. So that's to come. But there are some things happening now, but there's work to do there. Is that it for me? All right, you want to swap?
All right. For Lincoln Street School, we spent some time at a staff meeting this afternoon, just acknowledging the hard work and efforts of our staff. You know, when you look at this, this is, this is our entire collective staff that has made this possible, you know, the growth that we're seeing, you know, it's not just the classroom teacher, that tier one, it's the tier two folks providing intervention, it's the tier three folks providing specialized instruction, it's a collective effort across the staff. So one of the hallmarks of, you know, having strong teaming models in any school is celebrating the successes along the way. So we had a nice time just making sure that we acknowledged that hard work and giving some kudos across our staff and having several of our staff members come up and just share some of the best practices where we saw some really strong trends and growth in particular classrooms and just have them talk a little bit about what are some of the things that they're doing that they have found success with. So, you know, this, the data, again, is a mid-year data point, but it certainly speaks to, one, the normalcy that we're returning to, as well as the hard work that's going on. So when we look at the whole school reading, I'll probably speak a little bit more to the whole school reading and the whole school math slides than I will to the specific grade levels. But really what, you know, we're trying to do, as Tanya said, is we're trying to shift the kids in their lanes to the left, right? You know, if they're, whether it's dark red, the light red, and so on across. So when I look at this initially, you know, you look at the students in the green from the fall and then you look at them, and I believe if I'm doing my math correctly, we moved somewhere around 50 or 60 students into the green across the building, which is really some nice growth. And then it going from 19% down to 12% in our, for students that were scoring in the red, that moves, that means that we moved a lot of students over into that yellow, which is right on the cusp of where we want them to be as far as being on grade level. So we saw some nice growth in reading and, you know, I'll kind of save math for another moment. We did notice a little bit of a stronger correlation, some trends pointing towards some stronger growth in math, you know? And again, one data point, but we're kind of digging through that and trying to make sure that we understand all the whys behind it. Again, you know, our grade three students, to Main Street's credit, tested quite well in the fall, to be perfectly honest, in reading. And again, they showed some really nice growth. The one that really jumps out to me, not just that we have 75% of the students in the green section, but we went from 20% or 31 students down to 10% or 16 students that are in the red. That's incredible growth for students that are receiving multiple tiers of instruction and intervention in reading. So we are really, really excited to see that piece in grade three.
Can I just say, I just want to look that up too, because my son's in third grade. Those kids were in first grade in fall of 2020. And I remember last year when we were going through these data points, those were the grades, right? I guess they would be now, the kids in third and fourth grade, that we were seeing such big impacts from the pandemic and the rough learning environment. So it's just, it's really incredible to see that growth in these grade levels, given the data that we have.
And another, another piece that I think is important, you know, I walked through multiple classrooms when the iReady testing, I'm not sure if I was in, I can't remember if it was reading or math. But teachers really, it was clear to the students how much the teachers valued their efforts, students' efforts on this. And that makes such a huge difference when you think about students engaging and really valuing and doing, putting in their best effort, right? You know, the teachers are really doing a great job of saying, this is important, this matters to us, it should matter to you. And I think that that is also portrayed in these scores.
Can you go back? Yeah, so one of the things I think that's also really interesting is that it's 20%, is that right, in the red?
Yes.
Just the 10%?
Yep.
But if you include the yellow in the red, it's now 25%. So essentially, that group that was 50% of yellow were down to 5%. So one dropped to, one dropped to and a half.
Absolutely.
And the other one dropped from 50% down to 5%. And so all, and you see it in the green, but all those groups are moving. You know, you see a lot of the kids that were in the lighter green have moved over to the darker green.
Absolutely.
I mean, there's some kids that are probably still in the same band, but it seems like it's, you know, it's just, you can really see it visually sort of across the board the growth pattern.
It also is, not to jump in, it's not my turn, but I'm going to. But the, the kids that are exceeding, the other thing is to hold that.
Right.
Right? Because sometimes like they'll hit there because they were kind of on the cusp. Sometimes they can fall back in.
Right.
And so it's like, not only to hold, but to make gain is actually pretty tricky, the kids that are all the way.
Right. And the dark green, I mean, I don't, just so that we're clear, it's really hard to see because the fine print in the bottom is tough. But the dark green is mid or above grade level, right? So we are mid-year right now. So those are the students that are, you know, showing, it's not just students that are above, but they're where they should be. So we want to continue that growth so that they are, again, continuing to move forward. Yeah, and again, my intention was to go fairly quickly through the grade levels. But again, you can see that there is consistent movement across the left. There's, you'll see bigger bands in grades four and five in the yellow. Again, I think as Patrick had said, you know, a lot of that is we're moving students over from the far right. But that's also an area that is great and going to be a focal point of a lot of our collaborative teaming conversations as far as we've got these students that are right on the cusp of grade level right now. How do we make that, that shift over for end of year? So that's going to be some real targeted instruction in the classroom at the tier one level. Fifth grade, same. And then if you look at our math, this is what we're really excited about when we talk about our Math Win model and the growth that we saw. And you'll see it across all three grade levels too. But, you know, when we're talking about starting the year off with, I believe that comes out to about 109 students in the green, and we just finished at 210. So we moved over 100 students into the green in this half-year period. And that's just, that's really tremendous growth, but it also speaks to the dedication of this Math Win model that we've put forward. And then again, going from 24% on the far right for the two reds, down to 10%. You know, that's, that's a lot of students that moved to the left. So we were really excited to see that and we can go down through, through the grade levels there. Again, grade three, really huge gains as far as the green. And again, when you look at that 17.5% down to 8.1% in the red, again, just consistent So with that being said, you know, this is the mid-year. We'll have fresh data in the spring as well as, you know, our state testing at Lincoln Street School, that will also be another data point, you know, that will give us another angle of the success of the work that's going on. But, you know, it's, again, it's, I think what we're seeing is one, a return to normalcy, but a really a collective effort between both staffs from both buildings and the students are responding, so.
It's hard, I think, with iReady, but I'm curious. So for the kids who are in kindergarten and first grade this year, I'm just thinking about the experience of the pandemic, I think it's impact. I've learned, and we've discussed it for a while now, some time. And now you have kids in kindergarten who are just starting, right back to sort of a semi-normal year, and kids who are first grade who were at least in school all last year. So I think it's hard to know because it's the computer test, right? And so, but how are you, we expected sort of big gaps in learning, the pandemic and those two classes, how would you say their learning is comparing to, is there a way to kind of assess their learning?
There is. We actually just did it, like, this afternoon. We were looking with kindergarten specifically, we spent more time in kindergarten than on first grade, but it was similar. We were looking, Carla Putty has been collecting data from BACS and from other things. And so this is kind of like the first year, this group, that almost exactly mirrored pre-pandemic kindergarten. So it's, it still is room to grow. Like, when we looked at it, we're like, okay, so we're back where we were, still not good enough. Yeah. Right? I feel like you said that every year. It's like, it's, but this year, when we were looking at our kindergarteners, they're where they were pre-pandemic. Yep. Pre-Christmas. Yep. With our other data points, so. I mean, that's, I think that's good. And it also, like, yes, there are, there's still some residual things from the pandemic and there's other stressors and things going on in families and all of that. But I also think that it is, we are able to start having the conversations of like, we can no longer say it's the pandemic. Right? Right? Like, okay, yes, and here they are, and they're about where they were before, and so like, let's move and let's do some things. Yeah, great. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you both very much for that. That was super helpful. Thank you. Okay.
It's dark in here.
Hang on a second. Screen's off here. So that's going to bring us to some committee reports. And we have three listed on here, I think, are the only ones that are sort of happening right now. So Patty and Patrick, is there anything for D E I J? I know I missed, Andres was here at the last meeting and I saw the notes on that in the.
Didn't the last meeting get canceled?
Yep, the last meeting got rescheduled.
The D E I J meeting, okay.
We haven't had a meeting since.
Okay.
Since our last board meeting.
Okay, so that brings us to policy, and I know we have loads of them in here.
So we do, we have one that's a second read, so I don't know. The staff health policy, G B G A, we only did a first read of, so I don't know if we want to look at that one first, if anyone had any further.
What's the acronym?
G B G A, I think it's the last one.
It's the last page in the packet, yeah. I don't think there's a lot to go over with that one because we spent time at the last meeting, but I think we were being a little conservative, I guess, to give it any chance. I haven't heard any feedback from anyone for the public and, or I haven't heard any discussion on the board about that one either, so it's what we went over before.
So just because I wasn't here, the red language is all of the new language?
Yeah, I'm sorry, because that's, that's true, you weren't here, Dawn.
Yep.
Yeah, that's all new language. And, you know, some change, a few changes from what was in there before because it was a more pared-down policy. But it is something that, you know, I think the folks from the, the teachers groups and whatnot are aware of these changes and it's in line with some of that. And Heather certainly has been involved with a lot of the process.
Okay.
And, you know, so it fits with those components that it wouldn't be a surprise. And there's also a portion here, if you look at number three, it even says that if there's something where it's explicitly stated otherwise in a collective bargaining agreement, that that would essentially overrule or trump this part of the policy.
Okay. Does anybody have any further discussion on this one? So I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve policy G B G A as listed here. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So that's going to bring us to the first read of the other, all of the other policies.
Yeah, so I'll go through the, maybe I'll go through, is it okay if I just kind of talk, you want to go, I'll go talk through each one and we'll pause for comment and then maybe we can vote at the end if there's any that we want to do a second read of? Because there's a few. And just to remind everyone, there's a lot here because the central office did do an audit of all the policies. So there's policies that, you know, we might be missing that we need or that need updating due to law. So we're trying to kind of move through a lot. So thank you guys for reading them all. So we'll look at policy A C, which is the non-discrimination equal opportunity policy. This was a policy that was last revised in 2018. I think the things to point out is that this is, I mean, identifies education as a civil right. There, what was really helpful is there is an expanded and clarified list of classes that are protected there. And I think the other thing I'll point out is that there's, under, I guess it's a D, it says district anti-discrimination plan. So this stipulates that each district needs to develop a coordinated plan to prevent and address incidences of discrimination. I know this is something that's come up in public comment at our joint board school meetings of sort of plans for addressing discrimination in our schools, so that's in here as well.
Mind if I add something?
No, please.
So, you know, I'd also add to this too is that, you know, this isn't a brand-new policy because we had some language before and part of the description says that there'll be a district anti-discrimination plan, but it just makes the plan much more explicit.
Yeah.
Instead of it being a plan that's now being stored somewhere else and not accessible to the public, really all of this is now spelled out. So all those laws that were there. So all those laws that were there before and some additional ones that have, might have been passed in the meantime or amended are all incorporated into this. So it's not that the district wasn't concerned about this in the past and didn't address it, but it just makes it much more transparent for the public to now have it in a policy that someone can easily access without having to make an appointment to go into the SAU office.
Yep.
Okay.
Any questions or comments?
I just have a quick sort of kind of procedural question.
Sure.
Is that I noticed that it's all in red, and then the first section is crossed out. Usually, I don't, we don't usually see them looking quite this way, so I'm just trying to understand, was the?
So it's a, it's an existing policy, but as, I think as Patrick explained, the, it's basically been completely revised.
Completely rewritten, so the strike through that was the original policy.
Yes. So it's still in accordance with law, but the language is much more specific and detailed. And I don't know, Esther, if there's anything else you want to add on that, but that's my.
No, that's exactly it. It's basically, we had to redo the entire policy.
Yeah.
And is this policy consistent with all of the, the schools or the different, is this just relative to Exeter? You maybe already said that, and I missed it.
All of these policies, the same packets are going for it all. They come out of the policy committee, and every board gets the same packet and the same policy revision brief.
Yeah.
Yes, but for this one specifically, this one about discrimination, is this going to be across the SAU?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That's right.
And so you're right, Dawn. I mean, this is something, and something we also talked about the last meeting. I think because there's such a backlog of policies in terms of the number of policies that have been identified by the policy committee. Typically, what we were doing is anything that's, that's big of a rewrite, we automatically just consider to be a first reading and a second reading. But I think if, what we did last time is that the board felt comfortable with it, just go ahead and make our first reading also be the final reading. And I think with the, that staff one that we held over that we just passed a moment ago, there was enough new section that it wasn't just fleshing something out, it was really sort of a new language and new rights. And so we held on to that one. But some of these other ones, I think, we're hopeful that we can just go ahead and, and move it forward to sort of a final vote tonight and not have a second reading for each of these. But if any board member feels like it should be a second reading, we can discuss that, of course.
Any further questions on this one? No?
Do you think we, you want to go, I don't think we need to vote on each one as we go. We'll vote at the end?
I think we should vote at the end.
Yeah, and see if we want to do a second reading of any of them. Okay.
Yeah.
Great. So the next policy is policy code BEC. This is a policy for non-public sessions. And again, this is a revision. It was last revised in 2013. And this one's, I think, pretty straightforward. You guys got the policy brief, but just for anyone who's listening, it clarifies that non-public sessions may only occur during a public meeting. It makes references to. Let's see what else is really relevant.
That's exactly how we.
Yeah.
I think, I think one of the, one of the things that it does is that because the non-public language is in this right to know law, and the right to know law is pretty long, and so it just picks out the part that's, you know, really applicable to this. And then it also takes some of the education rules and overlays that with it. So it just takes things that are already out there in law that we have to follow and just makes it a little bit easier for someone in the public to quickly access it. And it's what we should be doing anyhow and have been doing.
Yeah, it's, that's right. Okay, so moving along. You want to take any of these, or you want me to keep going? Want to do air quality?
Sure. I'm sure, I can do air quality. So, I mean, again, this is not a new policy. It's just, I think that the biggest change with this is more of adding a section that addresses water quality and access. It is already an air and water quality policy, but sort of divided this up to a section that's talking a little bit more about air quality and another that talks about water quality. And, and then some of the updates in administrative rules and the laws are incorporating that about drinking water and plumbing requirements and those sorts of things.
Okay. I'm curious. During the discussion about air quality, did, during COVID, we had all of those discussions about making sure all of our schools had all the filter systems in it and everything. Has that ever been addressed in this policy? Or is it just about like emissions and buses and?
Yeah, I mean, it's not addressed in this policy.
It didn't come up in the conversation either.
Yeah, just curious.
But it's.
And I think a lot of it's based on, you know, these are based on sort of the minimum requirements in terms of what's required by state law.
Okay.
And some of these things, you know, there's a, there's an RSA that looks at air quality in schools, for example, and looks at investigating air quality. So it's not sort of COVID-specific. I mean, we certainly do some things that are in addition to this, but it sort of sets the floor about what we're going to do.
Okay.
But it's an interesting point, Patty. I mean, there are other things related to air quality that we do, and I think we certainly encourage.
Yeah, maybe those policies are coming, you know, like.
Yeah.
We sort of settle down from all of this. But I was just curious.
Okay. Any other questions on that one?
No.
Yeah, a lot of this is about air pollution and buses and those sort of things more than, you know.
A global pandemic?
Well, yeah, but I mean, but you're right. That is something that certainly is, we've become very cognizant of. It's just not, there's not a separate law about that, and we don't sort of have that as a separate policy.
Right.
You know, in here at least. I mean, we could add it. It would require rewriting part of it to add a paragraph or a couple of sentences or two about, you know, air purification and those things. It seems like it could get really messy because I remember the amount of time that was spent on those memorandum of understandings, but that may be something for a future revision of the policy that would be worth looking at, is doing something with that.
Yeah, am I, you can see in the second part, it says, "Building administrators are directed to annually investigate their air quality in their respective school buildings using a checklist provided by the New Hampshire Department of Ed." So we have to do that every year. We check the internal air quality, and if there, we go through a checklist, the facilities manager takes care of that, and if there's any red flags, then we have emissions tests, et cetera, done.
Right.
So that's included, that process is included in that language.
Right.
Okay, to move on?
Go ahead.
Okay, so the next one is policy code EBCA, crisis prevention and emergency response plans. Again, this is a revised policy, last revised in 2019. So this is, this policy is to reflect a new law, which was passed in 2022 HB 1125. So some of the language has been updated to reflect language from the Federal Department of Homeland Security. As you can see, a lot of it, similarly, Dawn, is sort of rewritten and maybe more specific to plans that need to be in place and some procedural things like when those plans need to be submitted, who they need to be submitted to. So a lot of, a lot of those were procedural updates as well. I think it's, so one is the, to be in accordance with the law, and I think it's also an attempt to make it more specific.
Okay.
Anything else, Esther?
Only for us, we had to do, make a change to really clarify between a district and an SAU plan, so this policy includes both, whereas the model plans didn't all have that because not everyone's configured that way. It's basically just language and date changes due to the law.
Okay. Any questions on that one? You want to do fire and all hazard drills?
Sure. So we have two other ones here, fire and, instead of just fire drills, fire and all hazard drills. So you can see on here that there's six fire evacuation drills and four hazard drills in the school year. And it just really puts into writing a little bit more about what we're doing and how frequently we're doing that, again, to make sure that we're in compliance with emergency response plans. And again, we already do these things. It's really just putting this more into writing about what needs to happen each year and the plan for these so that we're prepared in case there's an emergency. And then the other one that's on here is about bomb threats, which is a new policy, although, again, I would, I'm going to speak here to say, I think this is one that we can probably get our head around pretty quickly and even consider passing tonight. But it essentially just says that bomb threats are serious, and whether they're real or are hopes, we take it seriously, and we're going to work with local law enforcement, you know, both in terms of the response and, you know, and potentially how they want to follow up on this, whether or not it's, they want to pursue it as criminal activity. But it's something that is taken super seriously, and, and this just has the policy that describes sort of philosophically as well as the response protocol about how we'd handle those.
Yeah, and I'll just say, the line that we really worked to clarify was that second sentence, which no employee or stu, no employer or student shall make by any means a real or a false threat that a bomb has been or will be placed on school premises.
Right.
So both will be treated seriously, and that the threat is considered a crime.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Which one are we on here?
The last one, relation to police authorities.
Do we do building and grounds?
That's what we're doing.
Nope, that's next.
Okay.
Well, next.
Why don't you do that one, and I'll do the educational surveys one since we?
Oh, sorry, I think the buildings and grounds one, yeah, let me do the buildings and grounds one. So this is, actually, I wasn't here for this discussion, maybe you should handle this one, the buildings and grounds, security. It's a new policy.
Yeah, we didn't, there wasn't, yeah, go ahead.
Well, these are all my policies, so to speak. So building and grounds, this is a new policy driven by the responsibility to keep your buildings safe and your grounds safe, again, driven at the request and required policy. So it's outlined in our emergency operations plan that we should have this building and grounds policy. So in order to be in compliance with the emergency operations plan, you have to have a building and the grounds policy because it's referenced in the EOP policy, as is policy EBCC and many of these other ones. So you have to have these policies because they're referenced in the other policy.
Any questions on that?
No.
Okay, Esther, I might ask for your help with this one because I know there was a lot of conversation around this at the, this next one, which is policy code ILD, non-educational surveys and questionnaires. This is not a new policy, it was last revised in 2017, but there have been some updates here to really clarify what is state law, what is federal law. I think, I guess the one thing I want to point out that we spent most of our time talking about is under general A4, there's a reference there that says, "No non-academic survey requesting information concerning sex behavior will be administered to any student in kindergarten through grade six unless required by federal state law regulation." That language, information concerning sex behavior is in the law. And so we had some questions around that terminology, but decided to keep the language as written in the law because any kind of wordsmithing was just honestly making it more confusing. So I just want to point that out because that's probably where we spent most of our time in the policy committee meeting, trying to clarify that. And, let's see, I'm thinking if there's anything else that we really discussed outside of that.
Yeah, I think the rest of it is pretty, I mean, the bottom line is if, any, any kind of survey that isn't related to academics, you have to have a parent opt-in for, except the youth, the New Hampshire Youth and Risk Survey. That's an exception. So in general, that's what this law does, is it protects any kids being surveyed about anything other than academic needs without a parent opt-in.
And this one we might want to come back to as a second read. I think the committee, I don't know, the committee wanted more time, you know, possibly with their boards to look at the language. I think we did a good job of just kind of keeping the language that was in the law in the policy, so I'm, I'm not necessarily recommending a second read, but I want to just be transparent to say that the other committee members were considering that just because some of the language was. But I, I really think we, we did our best to try to keep the language as connected to the law as we could for this one.
So, yeah, so likely this one we should probably pull out because if there are changes, then we would have a separate policy. This board would have a separate policy than the others in the SAU even.
Right.
Just a small amount, so I'd probably recommend that.
Yeah, just so the board knows, this is not on the schedule for the policy committee for the rest of the year to come back, and other boards have approved this, so this would come back again next fall should the board, should the policy committee request it.
Oh, okay, good.
So, just so you have that information.
Okay, perfect.
Because we have a pretty strict cycle set up to the end of the year.
So everyone.
So anyone that, so if the policy committee wants to look at them again, it would come back in the fall as one they want to relook at, just because we've got to get through, as everyone's mentioned, all the required ones that we're behind on.
Okay, perfect. And then, do you want to speak to KLG, because we talked about that?
Yeah, so Heather and I spoken about this a little bit. There's another one that's in our packet, which I'm not recommending we adopt. I was just going to say that, because it speaks to that, essentially, if you have an SRO, that what are the requirements for, on how you need to do that? You need to have a memorandum of understanding if you're working with SROs and other things that are required by law. But we've had some discussion within the past five years, let's say, about that, and at this point, the position of the board is that we don't, we don't want to engage SROs. So I don't think this is a policy that is needed, particularly depending on how you read that second paragraph. It says essentially, the board is authorizing the district because it says the district may utilize SROs and may collaborate with local law enforcement agencies to engage the use of SROs. And that's not the policy of this board right now. So I don't think it's a policy that we should adopt.
Well, at the end of last year, I wanted to look into the school marshal program and to have something like a blanket policy in place in case anything like that progresses in the future. I'm not sure if I see the harm in that.
Could I, could I speak to the policy also? The intent of the policy is not only SROs, it really is the, to have positive relationships with police authorities, such as bringing in the Mabel and having the DARE officer, because the first sentence is that we cooperate with law enforcement. I think it goes on to define the SRO as Patrick described, but there is an intent to build positive relationships with the community police that, whether that needs, language needs to change or if that's not as clear, but that's really the intent at the elementary level, most elementary levels. So I just bring that to the board's attention for consideration.
I mean, if we're going to adopt a policy, then I guess I'd say we'd have to strike the whole second paragraph, and then we'd just have a policy that says it's the policy of the school district to cooperate with law enforcement agencies to protect the health, safety, and welfare of students, staff, and visitors. I'm not sure that we need a policy for that, but certainly could develop a policy that says that. I, Patty, I hear what you're saying about the, you know, potential of a marshal program, but that's not something we've done. I think I'm just concerned about, the language that's in the policy says the district may use SROs and may collaborate with local law enforcement to engage the use of SROs. And we've, our current position as a board is that we're not, we're not authorizing the district to engage SROs, because it talks about creating a whole memorandum of understanding for the use of SROs. So that's, that's a process that you have to go through, and we, if we were to hire an SRO, we have to have a memorandum of understanding outlines what their duties is, describing how they're paid, what their function is, what sort of things they're responsible or not. If we decide as a board that we want to do that, we certainly would want to have a policy and want to have a memorandum of understanding, but that's not currently what we've decided.
Well, would you, I guess, Patty, would you feel, I'm just curious, if, like in that last sentence, in such situations, a superintendent is authorized with approval by the board to develop? I mean, because the way it's written now, that the superintendent can make that call.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm not really against what you're actually proposing, Patrick, but at the time of that discussion, we tabled the discussion, there was no vote that said, we don't want this. It was like, we're going to table this, and we listened to the administrators and what they wanted the money to go toward in that particular year. We also learned a great deal from the community that came forward and gave us a lot of thinking points, and we've, I think, done a lot of work to understand a lot of that over these past couple of years. But it's not like the entire board was anti-SRO. So you did state that that's not our, we didn't want that, that's what you said, the board.
Yeah, I said, as a, well, we didn't adopt the position that we're. Yeah, I said, as a, well, we didn't adopt the position that we're, that we're, that we're engaging the use of an SRO, which is what this policy says, we didn't...
Okay, I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, so that's, that's why I'm saying this wouldn't apply, because we're certainly not anti-police or anti-folks coming into our school, and we just taught her, so a couple of amazing updates about the dare program and folks coming in and giving safety tips, and, you know, we certainly have the officers out front, and, you know, we have a great connection with the police department, and we should continue to, you know, develop that. I don't think, I'm certainly not saying that, and I, and you're right, I can't speak for the whole board, but that was my understanding at the time, that we didn't move forward, there was some serious consideration about engaging an SRO in a more formal way, and we decided not to move forward with that, so, right?
Correct.
I mean, so, and, and we haven't since then. So I, I think I just get concerned about the language that's in here, it says, I mean, it says that it's essentially authorized in the district to use SROs, but we haven't made that decision to do that.
Do you think that this policy is worthy of keeping in the file, Esther, just using the first sentence? I mean, does that cover everything that everyone wants us to?
I'm just looking on to see, it's not a, I'm looking to see if it was a required or a recommended policy based on law, and usually...
It is, no, I don't know.
I think it's only required if you have an SRO, it is required that you have a policy.
It says... Only if the school district will be using a school resource officer who may also serve as a law enforcement officer with a local law enforcement agency. So if the intention is to use a school resource officer, you'd use that policy.
Yeah, so I think based on the summary, and I'm just looking at the summary from Heather, it says RSA 18611 requires, so something is required, school boards to adopt a policy and enter into a MOU with local law if the school district will be using a school resource officer. The policy uses may regarding SROs and does not require the use of such services. The policy also articulates the agreement by the district to work cooperating with law enforcement agencies. So it looks to me, and I can look up while you're talking, 186, that the requirement is around an MOU if you're using an SRO.
Right.
So if we're not using an SRO, then I would say that the policy's not required.
Right.
And should a time come where we decide to have an SRO, we can put the policy in action?
Absolutely, yeah, that's the sort of policy we'd want to pull out, because then we would have made the decision, we want to have it formally announced, that we're going to have a memorandum of understanding as a part of it.
Yeah. Okay, so that was a lot of policies, were there any of those policies that you all would like to have a second read of?
Nope.
No?
Esther clarified the one that you mentioned, so I guess...
So that's the easiest way to make this motion, do I list off all the policies or...
Is there anyone that want a second read? No?
No. Nobody wants a second read.
Yeah.
So...
I guess we'd list off all the, make a motion to pass a series of policies, if anyone wants to break any of them out, we can.
Well, we want to take out the one that we don't want to approve, okay?
Right.
Yes.
We just talked.
I don't think we have to have a motion to do anything with that, I think we just have a motion to pass something, is that right, Esther?
Right, right, just the ones you want, yeah, just the ones you want to pass, if not, then, if you don't want to have it at all, then I just won't bring it back.
Right.
And it won't be in the Exeter elementary policy page, won't exist. And I can double-check with Heather to make sure that we're interpreting her notes correctly. I mean, it makes sense to me, if you don't have an SRO, you really don't need a policy about an SRO, but I can double-check that and put it on the agenda if there is some requirement we have to have it, or leave it off if there's no requirement, does that make sense?
Yeah. So I'll, I'll just make a motion that we pass the other policies that we reviewed today, except for the public safety one, so that's AC, BEC, EBBD, EBCA, EBCD, EBCC, a little alphabet super this, and ECA and ILD, I think that's it, right?
Did you get the staff health one too?
We already passed that separately, we took a separate vote on that.
That's right, okay.
So it's essentially all of those except for the, the one on relations with police authorities, which is KLG, and the staff health one, which we already passed.
That's right. My second.
Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that brings us to old business, do we have any old business?
I do.
We do?
I just have a quick one, the, some of you might be familiar with the Professional Growth Fund, I'm just double-checking with the board, I believe Patrick is usually the rep on that, is that still the case? Because we do need to set up a meeting, because I do have that, or is it you, Susan? Or, can't, I just couldn't remember, just asking for clarification. For me, this is the group that if there's no sabbatical, there's up to $18,000.
I'm not on the sabbatical committee, you said.
No, it was Sarah last time, I think.
I, I mean, I'm happy to do it, but I think we've had, or had a couple of us or...
Susan, you want to do it, Susan?
Susan's willing to do, is that okay?
Sure.
Yeah, okay, great.
So Susan?
Yeah.
All right, I'll set up a meeting, I just want a clarification, thank you.
Thank you, okay, perfect. Okay, so with that, we need to make a motion, someone needs to make a motion, I will make the motion to go into a non-public session, RSA 91A dot 32C, I want to use it C.
Yes.
C, yes.
So I'll make a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, all those in favor?
Roll call vote.
A roll call vote. Aye.
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 Okay, and so with that, we will dismiss all of you, thank you for being here, staying for this meeting, and thank you for the presentation and all your work on the budgets and all of that, thank you. Make a motion to come out of non-public, do we have a second?
Second.
A roll call vote?
Aye.
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 Okay, and so we are out of non-public and...
So I, so I'll make a motion to approve the request that we received, the personnel request, upon the condition that it does not set any precedent regarding collective bargaining and collective bargaining agreements.
My second.
Second, okay, any further discussion or whatever, okay, non, roll call vote?
Aye.
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 I don't know if we needed a roll call, did we?
No.
I'm never going to get it right.
It doesn't matter, you can, we can, there's nothing says you can't do a roll call vote.
All right, and with that, we will end the Exeter School Board meeting at 8:02 PM.